I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting on Monday, September 19th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We are meeting in the Neil Shapiro Center for Performing Arts at the Winthrop High School, 400 Main Street, Winthrop. This is being televised live. May I have the roll call, please? Ms. Leonard?
Pardon?
Ms. Littieri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Matusci?
Yep.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Ms. Powell? Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Littieri, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have public comment tonight? Oh, goodness. Yes, please.
Okay, pause, Zach, please, two. I shouldn't be wrong with who I am. I'm here tonight because I'm actually, shame on me, I'm alarmed by what I've learned. It's been on state books for a long time, but I'm more alarmed by what's happening in our schools specifically. An incident with my child who was asked to or forced to fill out a form that asked him for his crime. He wasn't given an option. He had to fill it out. There was also another incident where, I guess in our middle schools, there are teachers who are actually proactively outreachy and asking the students to keep their secrets, which is completely unacceptable to me. I understand that there are folks who might agree with this type of behavior, but the challenge here is, this is concerning because, first of all, why are we in such a rush? According to a study done by Esther Mirak and Jay Sevigny, they're two PhDs out of the University of California, San Francisco, they identified about a million people identify as transgender. I recently learned that there are 40,000 people on a platform called Reddit who are in the detransition process. Why does this matter? That's 4% of a million people. Why are we in a rush to do this in our schools? Why are we in a rush to talk to these people in our school, dumb Asians?
There you go.
Why are we in a rush to keep parents out of it, which is what's moral? I don't want to debate the transgender issue. I want to debate this law that I ask you guys to help us with. Right now, did you know that if your 14-year-old daughter goes into the nurse's office and asks for contraception and says, "Don't tell my mother or father," you don't have to tell them. I don't know in what world anybody thinks this is the right thing to do, but we need to get with our state legislatures. We need to get with Catherine Clark. We need to get with, who's the other one, man? Marky. This all has to change on every level. We need your support as a school committee. It's true. It takes a village. You're all part of that village. Ms. Leonard, I don't mean to call you out, but I do because I know you disagree with me on this, but I think you can both agree. My rights are just as important as yours are in this town. And my right to make sure that my child is not being spoken to about things that I don't want them being spoken to about is not superseded by your right to allow your child to be spoken to within those topics, with those topics. Excuse me. I challenge you to go out to Reddit and read up on these stories, how these people who are detransitioning, who have gone through the process starting at an early age, are now, because they're mutilated, because their bodies are mutilated, they can't reverse it. I agree. Suicide rates are high in that group. What makes us think, proactively talking to a student who is all but a stranger on day one, what makes us think that might not trigger that student? If we care about our children, the future of this town, and frankly, the future of this country, we need to do something about 603 CMR 2300. I'll be emailing all of you, and I have a hope that all of you will join me in trying to get Mr. Turco, Ms. Edwards, and everybody in this community involved in turning this over. There is no way a 14- to 17-year-old child has the mental or emotional capacity to be keeping this stuff from their parents. We're in America. This law tells me that someone thinks that all parents are guilty of being bad parents if the child doesn't want the parents to know. That's not true. I'm sure there are things my child won't tell me, and I have a very good relationship with my children. You're not qualified. Nobody in these buildings is qualified to be having these conversations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment?
I just have a quick comment. Touch base on Todd, I believe that you're an adult at 18 and you should seek your parents' advice before that. I understand there are certain situations, but as a parent, you're right to talk to your communication is huge in the world. If you can't start it at home, how you can do it in the workplace, how you can do it in life. I am so sick of hearing about the pronouns. I think we should enough. I don't think it's that many lessons to discuss what a pronoun is, how to use it in a sentence. It's constant, constant, every day, and the kids have had it, the parents have had it. Can we move on to more math, more science? Can we, enough with the pronouns? Can we get off of this transgendered things, we're not a issue. But, I mean, I just think there's so much more than these kids are missing, especially with COVID happening. I mean, we're focusing on kids that are troubled, possibly, and kids that are not, but can we get back to what education is? The math, the science, accounting, figure out a mortgage, jury duty. Can we just do some other stuff? Because the pronouns, you're killing it. You're suffocating it to death. No.
Thank you. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Sure. Ellen Dolores.
Thank you.
For kids in the Winthrop school system. We're not Boston, we're not East Boston, we're Winthrop. We should be Winthrop.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
Rob Mahaco, precinct six. I'm not going to get into the pronoun things. I'm not even going to get into the transgendered things. The only thing that bothers me personally is when stuff is kept from parents. So, if, my children, I can tell you right now, I mean, everybody knows their children. My children are not transgender. Okay? Then no. But, if my child was transgendered and the school kept something from me, and we know, and Todd actually accurately stated this, the suicide rates are much higher for transgendered children than they are for regular, for, regular, that's a bad word. But I'm saying, the transgender rate is higher for suicide. So, I love my child. I love both my children. So, my job as a parent is to create a nurturing environment. I would try to create the safest, most nurturing environment for my child if he or she was transgendered, that they could have. If I don't have that information from the school, then I can't create that environment. So, that's the only thing I'm here to talk about. I'm not talking about transgendered, I'm not talking about pronouns. I'm just talking about the school informing me so I can give my children the most loving and nurturing environment. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Ms. Powell, if I just may, just for one second, follow up for the school committee and for the community, just to give a small background and not to get into any detail, and certainly not during public comment to answer questions, but just a brief follow-up. So, I hear what you have to say, and I want you to know that, and that I appreciate the feedback from parents. It is rare that we get feedback from parents, and as the superintendent for, going into my sixth year, this particular school year, we've heard from two parents who alerted us to some concern that they had regarding eliciting and soliciting information from students that they felt was unnecessary for us to think about and to hear their concerns about. So, I want that to be clear. I also wanted to be clear that upon getting that information from those parents, as a school district, our leadership team came together to discuss that two parents had contacted us. Whether it was one parent, two parents, or 50 parents, it's worthy of discussion, and we had that discussion. And we're continuing to have that discussion and continuing to work with our educators on moving forward with that information to determine what is in the best interest and how do we want to continue on with making sure primarily that our kids are safe in school, whether it's a child that's asking a question or had some, sharing some information about pronouns, or sharing information about something going on in their home, or sharing information about something that one might find completely irrelevant. It's upon us to listen. It's up to the school department to work with its staff to determine how that information is taken in, who takes that information, how they get it, what's appropriate, at what age level, and then how that information is shared with appropriate people in the school to help to continue to keep our students safe. I think it's also important to know, and I hear you around, the 14-year-old, students 14-years-old or older, who determine that they want to express, whether it be in writing or verbally, to a staff member in the school, that they do not want to disclose information that they are providing you to their parents. That is a law that I am very familiar with and has been around for a very long time. The intent of that law came prior to the world we live in now, many, many years ago, and it has been on the record books. I didn't have the time today to go back and try to figure it out, but I can tell you, I've been in the business for over 34 years, and I know it's been there ever since. My knowledge of it comes around dealing with students with special needs, and at 14-years-old, student on an IEP identified as a student with a disability, we have to ask them whether or not they want to share educational signing rights with their parents. In most cases, in my history anyway, and I'm sure Lane, who's also in the field, can speak of this, it is typically yes, the answer to that question, yes, of course I want you to share this information. I know in this public school that the intent is always to communicate with our parents and have shared responsibility no matter what we're talking about. When you look at the law, it's very clear that if a child expresses at 14-years or older emphatically that they do not want you to share that information, you can't. Whether that is right or wrong, or how you perceive it, it doesn't matter. Right now, it's the law. And Todd, I know that you are aware of that. I think I shared information with folks who was able, I didn't hear from you on it, but was able to share that information with you. But I do think it's important to know the context of what you're talking about when you're talking about this being a major problem in the public school. Might be in the public school as a whole, but what about Winthrop? So, here in Winthrop, our goal is always to share as much information with parents as we can, and to make sure that we are being transparent with parents until there is a situation where we cannot. But it doesn't end there. When a child does express that, it's not an automatic, okay, thank you for sharing with us, and now we won't tell your parents anything. There's much more conversation that goes on with the people that are getting that information as to why or why not this child doesn't want the information shared. And if in fact it presents a situation where that child is then unsafe, we are also able to reach out in other ways to make sure that we are keeping that child safe and communicating as much as we can. So, I just wanted you to have that context so that you understand, and I appreciate parents coming. We don't get parents to come to our meetings. So, thank you for attending. Thank you for expressing yourself. But I wanted the committee to know from the school's perspective, and I've had a meeting with all of the principals after speaking with the first parent that made the complaint this year, or expressed their concern this year, to try to make sure that everybody was aware of it and see what was happening within our schools, and get that message out to them that there is a concern, again, two parents, whether it's one or five.
Okay. Point, we need to, this is not on the hour agenda tonight, so we need to move on.
Sorry. I just wanted to be, I just wanted to be clear about where we stand.
Thank you. Deli, get some visitors tonight. We have Amy Epstein.
Hi.
To make the presentation.
Thanks for having me. I am here from CASA, which is Community Action for Safe Alternatives. We, every two years, we implement a community survey for young people to learn about where they're at. This measures risk to protective factors. We were unable to survey during COVID, so we are here now with the results of our 2022 survey, which happened in the spring. You all have some slides in front of you. You're welcome to look along. So, CASA is an organization that is committed to helping improve the quality of life for Winthrop residents and provide safer environment for children and youth by identifying and providing prevention resources within the community. We have a lot of programs in Winthrop. If you don't know about us, we have an office in the E.B. Newton Building. We have drop-in programs, middle school drop-in. We have a LGBTQ youth group. We have a women's group. We have a men's group. We have a social justice group. We have college mentoring. We have open rec nights with the police department. We do events and trainings, and we have the Winthrop Youth Providers Network. We surveyed 809 of the 987 enrolled students, and you can see a breakdown of each grade, how many were in each grade. The next slide goes over some, a lot of folks always ask, "How do you know the kids aren't lying? How do you know they're being honest?" So, the next slide talks a little bit about how the survey company ensures honesty. There are several reasons why a survey might be eliminated. So, for example, if a young person fills out at the end that they were not very honest, their survey gets eliminated. So, there's a whole list of reasons. They have to lie the same every time, or else their survey gets eliminated. So, that's a way to keep the information accurate. So, looking at the results from substance abuse, the first slide just shows you Winthrop students, Winthrop High School students, I'm sorry. So, the left is Winthrop High School students ever drinking, and the right is Winthrop students that drank in the last 30 days. You can see that since CASA has been doing this work for 25 years, we started doing the survey in 2007, you can see pretty much a decline ever since. This year especially, it stays the same. We see a little decrease still in high school. Looking at binge drinking, which tends to be a big issue in Winthrop for young people, we ask young people if they drank, binge drinking is identified by having more than five drinks in a row in one night. They spell it out for them in the survey. They define it. So, they were asked if they binge drank in the last two weeks. You can see that slowly increasing as far as like current binge drinking, but what's also interesting is what's, in addition, increasing is the perceived harm of binge drinking being low. So, more young people think that it's not harmful to binge drink, and as that number rises, obviously, the number of binge drinking rises. It makes sense. So, just to give you the numbers, 18% in 2016, 27% in 2018, and 35% in 2022. Lifetime alcohol use. What is interesting is that we see the numbers decreasing a bit in the high school, but increasing in middle school, which is a little bit new for us. We did not see that in the past. So, this is kind of showing us we need to start working earlier and going further upstream. So, we've been creating lots of programs for middle schoolers. Same with current use, you can see decreasing in high school, increasing in middle school. If you look at marijuana, we see the same story, decrease in high school, increase in middle school, and then the same with the current marijuana use. Early initiation of use, we know that young people who use drugs before the age of 13 are more likely to have problems with addiction, so we look at how many kids are using before the age of 13. This is actually also on the rise for both marijuana and alcohol, more drastically for alcohol, obviously. Vaping is way down, which is not surprising. We think that probably COVID really helped with that. Access is really hard when you don't have the bathroom in between classes. So, the vaping numbers are really low right now, or much lower than in the past. Looking at bullying, we see, again, that same decrease in high school, increase in middle school. This is, the first slide is bullied on school property. The second one is, I just thought it was interesting, we ask young people, so we look at protective and risk factors. So, one of the questions they ask is, would you be, what is the chance that you would be seen as cool for defending someone who's being verbally harassed? And you can see that number is actually decreasing over time, so less people, you can see the orange is high school and the blue is middle school, so you can see equally decreasing over time. The next slide is cyberbullying. I think nobody's surprised that over COVID, while we all moved to an online lifestyle, we can see a really big increase. So, the gray is the last survey we did, and you can see especially in seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th grade, huge increases in cyberbullying. Looking at relationships and sexual activity, the first slide just kind of lays out what the sexual activity is, so it's decreasing, it's the blue line, those are just students who had sex. The orange line is students who had sex before the age of 13, it's decreasing as well, and then the only thing that's interesting is that condom use is also decreasing. Unhealthy relationship behavior, so, and sexual assault. Just the next slide looks really bad because the increase is really high, but we're still looking at really low numbers. So, just the significance of the increase, I think, is really interesting. During the past 12 months, has someone you were dating or going out with forced you to do things you didn't want to do that were sexual, and the increase is from last year 5% to this year 8%? And then same with hurting them on purpose, went from 2% to 6%, and then physically forced to have sex when they didn't want to, went from 4% to 6%. So, again, still small numbers, but definitely an increase and something we want to look at. We do have a new DV grant from the Health Department that we're working together on, so that's great, too. Mental health. You're not going to be surprised that mental health is really tricky. COVID really had an impact on our young people. No one's surprised. This is, this is not just statewide, but national. You see a real huge impact in mental health for young people. So, the first slide is middle school. We asked these students these questions. So, I have a slide for middle and high school. You can see, again, the gray line is this year, so you can see the increase. We asked, "At all, I'm inclined, all in all, I'm inclined to think that I'm a failure? Yes or no? At times, I think I'm no good at all? Yes or no? Sometimes, I think that life is not worth it." Those are all increasing greatly since we, since COVID. And you can see, actually, if you look at the next slide, over 50% of high school students answered yes to "At times, I think I'm no good at all." So, really looking at the impact of their mental health. The next slide is, "In the past year, have you felt depressed or sad most days, even if you felt okay sometimes?" Again, orange is high school, blue is middle school, increasing over time. That's, it increased before COVID, it's increasing after COVID. Looking at the next slide, we're looking at middle school suicide ideation. Blue is making, is the ideation, orange is making a plan, gray is an actual attempt. We see everything going down except the actual attempts, which may imply that maybe kids are being a little more impulsive about it, which is interesting. And then the same kind of trends in the next slide for high school. "During the past 12 months, did you ever feel sad or hopeless?" Almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that you stopped doing some usual activities. This is the definition of depression, so experiencing depressive episodes. You can see that last year, the orange is really high for high school, it's pretty high for middle school, too. Both have increased, but, you know, over, over 35% of high schoolers experienced depression last year. This is a new question we asked this year that's interesting to me, anyway. It asked the young people how they manage these feelings of anxiety and depression and being stressed. What's really interesting, I guess, not surprising, is that technology takes the prize for the most common way to manage. Exercise is really high up there, and staying connected with friends and family. I found it interesting that so few went to drugs and alcohol. I kind of feel like that might be COVID-related, just access issues, and then, and the data shows that, too, that there's less drinking and drug use. And then, talking to a therapist is actually under, let's see, it's under 15% talk to a therapist or religious leader. So, I just thought that was interesting. Looking at the general kind of profile of risk and protective factors, you can see these next two slides are pretty intricate. You don't, I'm not going to read them all. Again, anyone who's interested in this data, please contact me. I'll have my information at the end, and you're welcome to contact me, and I'm happy to share the link with this. So, the yellow triangles are the BACH Harrison norms. So, BACH Harrison is the survey company, and so you can see kind of like a national norm, and then you can look at the, so for example, a risk factor that looks increased is a low commitment to school, which doesn't surprise us because of COVID. How could they be committed if they weren't even in the building? And then like a perceived risk of drug use is much lower, so that's another example of something that's increased. The next slide is a screenshot of our protective factors. An example would be religi, religiousness, rewards for pro-social involvement. We can see a lot of decreases. However, some good news, we have the school protective factors looking really excellent. So, they're pretty much the only protective factors that have increased over time since COVID. So, you can see opportunities for pro-social involvement, as well as rewards for pro-social involvement, have both increased in the school since COVID, which is really impressive. If you want to know how they find out some of those answers, I put a slide in to show you what questions equal those answers. So, you can see the opposite, opportunities for pro-social involvement includes when a young person is given, it shows you the questions they use. In my school, students have lots of chances to decide things like class activities and rules, as an example. So, yes or no? So, those are just the ways we get to that data, in case you're interested. More good news, has anyone, have you, do you have someone to talk to if you ever feel unsafe, abused, or need help? This number in 2018 was about 78%. This year, it was 90, which is awesome. Change ahead. So, just kind of going through really quickly, a couple of things that CASA is working on with the community to look at changing some of this data and making it more positive. We have all of our youth programming that I shared with you. We have a diversion program that works with both the police and the schools around suspension. We are working on getting a clinical intern to be around. We're partnering with the Health Department on all different projects, seeking funds to expand youth resources. We do evaluation and assessment. The police department, we work doing open rec. We have community events with them. We work with the schools. We have several programs. We have a career readiness. We have a job readiness. We have partnerships with counselors and administrators. We're looking at some curriculum. And then the last slide is just my information. We always are interested in folks becoming involved with CASA. The second Tuesday of every month is our coalition meeting. It's at 9:00 AM at the E.B. Newton. We welcome all of you. Go to our website, join our listserv, hit me up on email. That's it.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks for having me.
I wonder, do we have any questions? Yes, Ms. Swob.
I'm interested in the, on the mental health section. It, there were very high numbers in 2014.
Yeah, isn't that interesting?
Yeah. What happened in 2014?
I wondered, so you're talking about that suicide slide, right? Yeah. I wondered that, too. I was actually looking through it myself and thinking, what happened that year? And I wondered what year 13 Reasons Why came out? I was just curious, because I know that that really, right? That really affected people, and I think it was around then, but I could be wrong.
She may not know what that is.
Oh. It was a Netflix documentary that was really popular with youth, and it was all about suicide. And it really, I think, a lot of the feedback from people was that it was awesome, but it like kind of triggered some young people a little bit. I don't know. I'm just making a guess. I have no idea. I'm probably wrong at the year it came out, but I just, there's all sorts of things that can impact those decisions. I know, you know, there's all sorts of things, like, for example, one year, one town had like a pregnancy pack where all the girls decided to get, you know, so you can really look at different ways to think about what could have affected things, but it is really interesting to think about.
There's other slides, too, on mental health in 2014.
And there's that spike, right?
They're high, and I just, because I know we blame almost everything on COVID, you know, much, but, but there are, there must be some other factors that we probably don't even know, maybe.
100%.
And then how COVID affected some kids. Some kids stayed home and probably had a better time than they would have been in school because they were bullied, or whatever their issues were in school. Not that they were going to solve them when they got back to school because they stayed home. That's the other problem. But I'm just, I'm, I think it's always good not to think just COVID first, but to think all the other factors that could possibly go into these kinds of equations, and I really appreciate your work.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
And Amy is definitely reachable, responsive.
Anytime.
We work pretty closely together. Sometimes she has to haunt me through email, but if you do have questions, or if parents have questions, maybe, Amy, we can put your contact information.
Please do.
On our, on our individual school page websites, it may be helpful.
That'd be awesome.
Are there comparisons to national numbers? Because you mentioned 2014. Did you see that same rise across?
That's a great question. I could find that data for you. I don't have it on me, but I'm sure there's, we could take a look at that. That's a great, that's usually the best way to figure out what's going on, look national.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Swob.
A quick question. Thanks a lot, Amy, for the information. And again, it's great information, but if you guys need funding, I'm sure, to...
And again, it's great information, but if you guys need funding, I'm sure, to, to push this, to push these numbers down, and I'm sure there's been some funding available over the last couple of years, but how is your funding right now?
Funding is okay. We are, we have a couple of new grants, which are good. We could always use more, and I know that there was, there was some partnerships with the town in the past that we hope to keep moving forward with, and the school as well. The school usually supports some of the work as well, they have a little money in the budget to help with some of the things. But, yeah, we're always looking for more funds, and I've been writing grants furiously, and there's a couple of new ones that are coming through, so that's great, too. But yeah, it's a great question, always could use more funding.
We, we do partner on Youth Works and the diversion program, and certainly keeping in the loop to see how we can support any of the grants that are written. So typically, if the grants are written and there is, you know, a partnership with the school, the availability of those grants or the chance that you're going to get that grant is usually higher. So Amy will call me, or Leanne will call me, and we'll get together and maybe assign some other folks to help write that grant in partnership to boost up the, the chances for CASA to receive those funds, because they do come directly back to the school with the projects that we're, we're working on together.
And the data, too, that's key to the, to the getting all these funds around town.
It is, because we, we have, we take multiple points of data in the school, you know, and we talked about the Satchel Pulse Program, which is going to give us even more data. And, and that data in combination with this, and, and anything else that we can get helps us get a really good picture of our kids and just build the support systems based on the known, and not just what we're sort of assuming, you know, over individual incidents, but really kind of collecting that and putting it all together. So it's a pleasure to work with, with CASA and with the folks there. They have provided us with a lot, and information that we probably wouldn't otherwise have. And then their student support system, where students can come to CASA in a group, and then they have events that they put on throughout the town, where kids who might not necessarily be part of the weekly CASA group become exposed, whether it's the basketball program along with the Police Department, and they, they get a sense of, oh, this is pretty cool, as opposed to just saying, well, I don't belong there. And they, they meet other kids who they do, you know, hang around with in school, and, and it makes a connection for them and draws more students to, just another opportunity for students to fit in. So we, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, it's awesome. Yeah, we look out for lots of middle school events, we've been trying to up the middle school events because of all this data, so, join us.
Ken.
Any other questions?
Yeah, please.
Yes, Ms. Whoa.
Questions to comment? Amy, if any, the Woodup Foundation is very good. One-time, any kind of one-time expense you have.
Amazing. Thank you so much.
Field trip, something like that.
That's great.
Certainly ran into them. Could be helpful with that.
Amazing, thank you.
And Leanne can help with that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for helping me. Great.
Thanks, guys. Moving on, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two?
Sure.
Motion by Mr. Luteri, second by Ms. Petrie. May, any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard.
Epstein.
Mr. Luteri.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Petrie.
Yes.
Ms. Whoa.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. May I have a motion to approve warrant SVW twenty-three dash four in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents?
Sure.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Mr. Luteri. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Luteri.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Petrie.
Yes.
Ms. Whoa.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. No payroll warrant, no transfers tonight. I have a, can I have a motion to approve the Winthrop School Performing Arts request of the dance, for their dance recital of the use of the school facilities?
Sure.
Second. I do not have the date at my fingertips.
I can tell you.
Can we do this all together?
I'm sorry, there was a motion by-
Can we do this all together?
You can do all of these together?
I think it's five, is this five eighteen, five nineteen, five twenty?
Does anybody look into, um-
You can do all these together?
Jen, does anybody look into waives or anything?
Yes, just one.
So let's do them all, separate one.
Okay.
So separate the Winthrop.
So do, yeah, do Winthrop.
Okay, then, can I revise my request and have a motion to approve the Winthrop School Performing Arts Dance Recital and the WPG, WPG and ATCP TO trunk or treat event?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Luteri.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Petrie.
Yes.
Ms. Whoa.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the Winter Special Olympics, and also the Commonwealth Clinical Services for Women's Health Forum, and both of those would be coming with a vote to, would include a waiving of the rental fee.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Leonard. Do I have any discussion?
Do we usually waive fees for Commonwealth?
We, we have, we have in the past, the town Health Department is going to be offering during this session immunizations, I'm sorry, not immunizations, Covid-
Vaccines.
Yes, vaccines. So they're going to be offering back flu vaccines and Covid vaccines. We're going to give them two classrooms to do that, and then it would be various vendors from inside the town. This was in the past, Bob Delio had sponsored this event. We do charge a custodial fee, because there is a custodial, obviously, overtime necessary. They use the cafeteria space, and they use this auditorium. This year, the difference will be for the vaccination clinics. We're going to give them two separate classrooms to use on the first floor.
So they use, they, they, when they do rent, we do charge them, but on this one here, we're not? Is that what it's hearing?
So if someone else were to rent?
No, no, I'm talking about Commonwealth Clinic. Do they, is this the only time they rent a-
This is the only time they use the building, one time per year. It's the women's health event. It's been, it's, we've had it for about, well, at least five years.
Yes, it was at the ATC before, and it's been here since, yeah.
Any further discussion? And that is, that event is October nineteenth, according to my paperwork. Hearing none, further discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Luteri.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Petrie.
Yes.
Ms. Whoa.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. We have no subcommittee reports, superintendent's report.
Yes, I have a brief report, and I will stop by apologizing for speaking too soon, as I was going to be giving you the same update I gave you after public comment as part of my superintendent report, just to make the committee aware of the fact that we had had some parents express concern, and that we were addressing it, and we're meeting in an appropriate fashion with our staff, and putting protocol together so that all staff is informed of the expectations. Once that is all complete and staff has been informed, I can further update the committee on the process that we are undertaking with our students to ensure that everyone is safe and supported, and that we are gathering information from our students appropriately, and, most importantly, supporting them when they come to us in a, in a period of need. So more, more to follow on that, but again, I apologize for jumping on it a bit too quickly. An update, I put in your packet, a notification from the Department of Education, as we continue being sort of a magnet for audits here in Winthrop. The Department of Ed has selected Winthrop for its district accountability review by the Office of the District Review and Monitoring under Chapter fifteen, Section fifty-five A of the Mass General Law. And this is a typical review that happens periodically, about every six years, and the review includes looking at how the school district is dealing with equity, racial equity, analyzing things to the extent in the school which provide, that our staff provides high expectation for our students, that there is access to our students for everything that they are entitled to have access to, and to ensure that we are supporting our students to be well-prepared for college, career, and civic participation. It is somewhat similar to a coordinated program review in special education, or the NEAS and C review. The focus areas are a little bit different, and their timeframe is a little bit different. So we don't know when they are coming, it's not something that we can opt out of, and it's certainly a valuable process. So they will be asking us to, first, they'll be giving us a date of when they'll be showing up on-site. Typically, what they do is come out to the school district and participate in all four schools, looking at the school facilities on a walk-through, they'll be sitting in on classrooms, watching how we deliver instruction for short periods of time, they'll be looking at how our classrooms are set up in terms of having instructional practices posted, are we checking students for understanding, is there a consistency of how we deliver education at the elementary, middle, and high school level across the board, and is everything tied to a strategic plan? And not every school district has a strategic plan, you're supposed to, and are those items in your strategic plan tied to your school improvement plan? They'll be reviewing our school improvement plans, our strategic plans, our initiatives. They'll also look at bus, our budget and how we develop our budget here in Winthrop, and is that development of that budget tied to your school improvement plans and your strategic plan and your general overall initiatives? They spend about a week here, they do typically, in a school district our size, I would say they'll observe anywhere from thirty to fifty classrooms for short periods, fifteen-minute periods of time. It is something that needs to be organized by someone at the ground level, you have to have a point person, and so Laurie Galivan, Taguerrit, but she and I will, will definitely share those responsibilities. We've started with our leadership team by looking at some evaluations, just this type of evaluation that's been done in school districts similar to ours. So we started to pull down some of those results, because they do get posted to the Department of Education. The purpose of doing that is to see what they're looking at, at this moment in time, so we can prepare ourselves to make sure that the time that they spent here is spent well, and so that they're able, we're able to give them the best possible classrooms to look at in terms of what are, are they actually looking for. They will be doing interviews, they will talk to the school committee at some point as well, I'll coordinate that with you all, where they'll be asking questions about the setup of your committee. They typically look at how your committee works as a whole, in terms of relationships and following practice, what we present during school committee meetings, how much information we share, and typical of the Department of Education, they typically take a good six months to a year to get back to you with all that information, which is helpful. We look at audit, we're very used to them, as helpful to us, as we only see what we see when we look in the mirror, so it's definitely helpful to have somebody from the outside come in and take a look at how we do things here and give us suggestions for improvement. So more to come, this is very early stages. The notification always sends shivers up your spine, because it's one more thing that you have to do when you don't have time to do it, but we have learned that some of these can be quite valuable.
Do we have to write reports or anything?
We is me, and, and Laurie will, we will have to, not necessarily write full reports, but descriptions of, of items that they ask us to describe, like the process of the development of the budget. We'll have to put together a document, a narrative for that. You know, there, there are a whole host of things that they can ask us, it's just a matter of, they're doing their background research on us. We will do a self summary, self-reflection for them, which is brief, it's a questionnaire versus something like NEAS and C, which are, are, when you're, and, when you're building a new school, you have to do a much larger version of that. And, and I feel as though, you know, we're, we're small in terms of administration, but between the principals, Jen O'Connell, Noel, myself, Laurie, I believe we'll be able to pull that together and give them a clear picture of our school.
What are the consequences of this?
You know, I don't, there's not, it's not monetary. You certainly don't want to have your report on the Department of Education's website in which it reflects a school district in disarray. I don't think we would ever be remotely close to that, but you, you can pull a few from the, from the website to show that there are some schools in disarray. Our goal is not to, to be one of those, and I, and I don't think, I have no question or concern about that. But looking at, at other people's reports is helpful in guiding you, you know, to make sure you're showcasing them what they want to see, and you're not leaving anything out, because sometimes when you, you present yourself, i- if you don't tell them, they don't know what they don't know, and if they don't see something, they're going to assume you don't have it. So we want to make sure that we're giving them a clear picture of everything that we have.
Yes, Ms. How much lead time do you have? I know you've obviously been notified you're going to be audited. How much lead time do you then have once a date is set?
Yeah, so they notified us in August, and they told us that they would be telling us last week when they were coming, so I'm still waiting. So I'm assuming that that will come probably within the next month. I'm assuming they will be here to do all of their on-ground site visits in the spring, that's typically when they come.
Okay.
The data that they ask you for, and the, the items that they ask you for, we have, it's just a matter of coordinating those, putting those together, and then planning for them to come out, making sure our teachers are aware that this is not an evaluation of them, they're not looking at, they're looking for specific items, you know, that, that you're supposed to be doing. Do you have equitable classrooms? How is your class size? Do you have enough teachers in the classroom? Do you have enough materials? Our building, I'm not worried about, our buildings are going to be a highlight, and certainly staffing, by the spring, we'll be fully staffed, we're not down by much. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so you know what's actually happening in the school district, and the fact that the school committee will be involved in that process.
Is there any indication of why we came up? Is this just a random?
It's, it's, when, when they say it's random, it's never really random, because schools get evaluated by, in, in this particular review, every five to six years. So we were evaluated, I believe, six years ago, so it's our, it's our turn. Same thing with coordinated program review for special education, there's a, it's not a lottery, there is a series of, of dates that you are up for reevaluation, same thing with NEAS and C. Some of the non-scheduled types of things are audits of licensure, they can just randomly audit you for licensure, randomly audit you for any level of equity. And so as of right now, this is the one that we're on, we just finished several special education reviews that have all come out very strong, those were done last year, so this one is not a hard one, but we are looking forward to some feedback.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure. Next item, just quickly, we have scheduled negotiation meetings, I want to make sure people stay up to understand, I sent out to the subcommittees a list of approved negotiation meetings, and, and anything that is going to change, I will let you know, but for the public, to know that we are meeting, continuing on our negotiation track with, with the teachers on the twenty-first, which is tomorrow, secretaries on the twenty-seventh, and ESPs on the twenty-eighth, custodians on the fourth, ESPs again on the fifth, nurses on the sixth, and we have tentative dates for cafeteria, staff, and administration that have not been solidified yet. So I will let you know when those are up. Negotiations continue to be positive and, and forward-moving, I think that's important for the full committee to know, but also for the public to know, that we are, we are all working hard to come to a, a resolution, and we are hopeful that that will be soon.
Teachers, twenty-first is Wednesday.
Wednesday, what did I say, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow's a day ahead of myself. I'm not trying to wish anything away, but just trying to get there. Let's see, I think that is it for me for this evening.
Any questions? Okay, homeschool applications?
We have some that we are in the process of reviewing, but none for approval tonight.
Okay, appointments, resignations, retirements, and postings.
So yes, no appointments, resignations, or retirements, thankfully, but postings, we have an ESP still posting up at the Coming School. A part-time physical therapist, our physical therapist here, who is a part-time PT, took an open physical education position in our district, we're thrilled to have Liz Donovan as a middle school phys ed teacher, she will be amazing, and it's nice that she has
business, the ratification of the cafeteria contract.
So that is still outstanding. Um, they have not voted as a, um, as a unit to ratify the old contract. Um, however, we hope to have them do that. We have a subcommittee, sorry, we have a, we have a negotiation session with them just to answer a few outstanding questions, and then we will open up negotiations for them for the next three-year contract.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
In relation to the posted job um, openings for the winter and spring sports, it looks like every, every coaching position is available for applicants. Is that true?
Correct. So um, legally, every athletic posi- every athletic position is a one-year appointment, a one-season appointment. So at the end of that season, that position is open. Um, and legally, those need to be posted. It, it may mean the same coach is going to apply for their job and come back, or it may mean that the high school principal and athletic director are thinking about going in another direction, and they're willing to open it up for all applications. Um, but they have to be posted each year. No, none of those jobs are guaranteed uh, forever. Um, and the coaches are aware of that. They're aware that they're, throughout their, their uh, their evaluation process, uh, when they speak with the coach and, I'm sorry, the athletic director and the principal, they talk about whether or not they think they want to come back next year, and they discuss whether it's um, something that they're looking forward to and whether or not that it's going to be a, a good idea. Um, or whether or not that the athletic director and principal are going to seek additional candidates to see if there might be a better fit for the school. Um, but they do all, every position gets posted every season.
Any other questions? Public relations.
I will, um, I mean, I guess we have a few meetings up until the uh, trunk or treat, but it was a great event last year, and I encourage people, it takes, it, you know, it takes a lot of volunteers to go and, and donate resources, to go and, and have that for the kids, but it's a great event. And I encourage people to get in touch with the WPG and ATC PTOs to um, you know, offer any assistance. They might, the spaces are somewhat limited. Um, so I encourage you to reach out and help out. It's a great event.
No, nothing.
Awesome.
I'm good. Thanks.
Nothing from me. Um, just real quick, last year, um, I was able to secure a donation for my company, Wasabi Technologies, um, for the Wasabi Fenway Bowl for a hundred tickets for um, our high school students. And um, unfortunately, the bowl never happened because of COVID. Um, but I'm happy to share that I'll be able to secure those tickets again this year. So more on that to come.
That's great.
Wonderful. Um, and just a reminder that the CASA has opened the recreation nights on Friday night through May twenty-third from six to eight PM at the Old Winthrop Middle School. Those are great opportunity for students to get out.
Sure. And I just had one thing. Um, we were, if you, if you recall, the Doug Flutie Foundation had donated um, a communication board after we wrote to them and, and expressed our interest. Um, so the, the foundation donated it, and it's a beautiful board that allows our students on the playground, um, with communication issues, to be able to express themselves, express their needs. Um, and it's definitely a draw for other students to come and interact with students who have trouble communicating at that board. So although it benefits greatly our students with communication issues, um, it really does benefit our other students, understanding the needs of some kids who have difficulty verbally communicating what their wants and needs are. And the PTO at the Coming School um, certainly fell in love with the board at the Fort Banks. And unfortunately, um, the Flutie Foundation does one at a time, um, so you can't get two. But don't get me wrong, I called and through my Boston College alumni, I felt right out there to get a second one. Um, and uh, it was somewhat unsuccessful. However, Winarch stepped up. And so uh, the, the PTO worked with Winarch, and so I am happy to report that we will have one for the Coming School students. And, and again, all students use it. Um, so it's, it's neat to see all students coming over to the board. It fosters um, students being together and, and intermingling together and, and feeling supported. Um, and it's certainly my wheelhouse, so I love it. So I'm psyched for it. Uh, thankful to Winarch, thankful to the PTO for putting themselves out there to go ahead and make sure that there's equity for all our littles at both of these schools.
Fantastic. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
Uh, roll call?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Lutteiri.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Petrie.
Yes.
Ms. Whoa.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. Motion is adjourned.